Good evening, I'd like to call the December 11th, 2014, Meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. First, get a roll call.
Bob Kuhn.
James Lowery.
John Durkis.
Roger Moore.
Ted, the Planner.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, which includes approval minutes from both November 11th and 18th, public hearing on the Stone Ridge Farm gravel pit, pending application of the Stone Ridge Farm gravel pit, workshop with comprehensive plan committee, and planner's report.
I make a motion we accept the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous? Approval minutes, November, start with November 11th. November 6th means should be November 13th.
No, it should be November 11th.
Oh. The heading is wrong.
The heading is wrong, should be the 11th. Open for discussion.
Yes, that'll be the first item.
On page four. One, two, three, four, five, six, six lines up from the bottom starts code enforcement and inspections. Then it says working in confined permit. I didn't know what that meant. If you take it under, if you take the whole thing in as condition of approval is to have code enforcement and inspections, so I'm not sure working in confined permit is, I don't know what.
It means to be in the confines of the permit. But let me, let me get a point of clarification from Ted real quick. I'm looking at the attendees of that meeting. Rich, Tom, Bob, and Marty. Can, can we do anything with that?
I know you can, I know.
And we got Rich, Tom, Bob, and Marty.
So you're going to have Tom and Marty. Why? Yeah, Bob and Marty, that's all. We don't have enough to be able to.
To approve the minutes.
Right.
Right, alright, so do you want to make, do you want to continue the discussion while it's fresh? Or just hold off?
You're the chair either way. I, I just had two, two minor things and, and the minutes look fine in case Tom gets here. That working in confined permit making, could just be taken out. Then the next sentence says town council is working on and just add addressing these issues. And that's fine. Otherwise, I was fine with it.
Marty, do you have any comments? I don't think we're gonna be able to take action on, but for Marita, the sections. Any of the minutes.
November 11th.
November 11th, which is headed to 13th. Not, not the 11th, they just have the wrong date.
And we'll just stay the way it is until we get.
Yeah. Want to review them and be able to talk about it next time?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go on to the November 18th minutes.
I'd make a motion that we approve as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous?
Those who are present.
So, public hearing for the, I'll open the public hearing for the Stone Ridge Farm gravel pit. Do you want to say anything or?
I don't have anything to say unless somebody wants to hear something. I just wanted. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, where are they? They weren't at the pit, at the site walk. They're begging the site walk.
Is there anybody here who may comment on the other page? No?
Great. No. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And open up the pending application of the Stone Ridge Farm gravel pit. Conditional use application. Propose to renew existing mineral extraction permit for a 10 and a half acre gravel pit located on the south side of Curtis Road on property identified as tax map 23 lot 4 in the R4 district. Stone Ridge Farms Incorporated are the owners and M Welch and Sons of the applicant and the agents. Ted, do you want?
I believe that the applicant has met all of the concerns the Planner had regarding, regarding the application. And at this point, we've had the public hearing, there's been no input from the public. Board has found that it's granted two waivers on this and the applicant is in compliance with the ordinance. If you did notice also, the initial items that were in the packet, including water quality, water quality report from Westfield as well as the, the report from DTP, the special report that was sent in July. Basically, that, that information all in case the gravel pit is in the zone for DTP laws. And basically, some of those were entered in 2011. And the only question is, you know, this is, this, the only issue I think the board has is the length of this permit. Only the three-year terms. In this kind of situation, usually the permit holder would be the applicant. So I think we want to make sure that, that the, that the permit is not necessarily transferable. It's a permanent, permanent T in these situations. And if you close out early, the permit is totally void, okay? So also, when Mark does a closeout, he'll be able to close out the staff.
The question from the board to you the last time though was, do we have the authority to approve something past his right title and interest? Because he, I mean, he, right now, we were going, we were going to put in the phrase that he could renew it for up to two years, I think it was.
Right, for the full three.
Yeah, to get to the full three, because he only, he, that was the question the board presented.
Right. And the other question that I had also too, if it was transferable or whatever else on, because the fact is that if it's a conditional use, conditional use is if it's still within time period, it's still a lot.
But the purpose of the uses permit, the point is that the user of this gravel, the excavator of this gravel has to A, read all those standards of that permit, and then secondly, also has to post them on. And this, this applicant, we're giving the permit to this applicant. This applicant has right title and interest, and as long as he has right title and interest, this permit goes with that right title and interest. If he no longer has that right title and interest, the permit expires. And that's, that's pretty much the way that we break it. And that's the way, reflected in this unless the board feels otherwise. So that's response to the bond. So it doesn't necessarily limit it to time, it limits it to the, to the length of, of right title and interest in for an application. Because when he no longer has the capability to do it, you know, no longer has rights and he can no longer continue to do that operation.
Right, but that, it is transferable though, as any other use would be.
Yeah, well, if you want to do it that way, you certainly can. The simple fact is that we have to close out the pit. He, he's got to close out, this pit's got to close out. Pit can't continue.
Right.
Unless another permit is granted by the Planner.
But this permit would go on past that, allowing somebody else to do it.
Unless you say, no, this permit is, is limited to the, that time period that, that this current owner has. You want to extend it, then you would have, then he can't close out the pit. That's the whole issue.
Why shouldn't, I, I don't understand what the point you're getting at. If he closes it out, then the permit expires. But if he decides to sell that pit or the use of the pit to someone else.
Or the owner of the property decides to, so he closes it out. The owner of the property would then have a permit.
A permit for what? The, the pit's closed out. The point is, no pit, if he's gonna, if he's gonna terminate, this, this is, remember, all gravel pits have a life. And when they, when the person who's doing the excavation says, I shall no longer do it, they have to close it out in accordance to our ordinance, okay? Now, if somebody wants to make a deal on that, that's, that's fine, but we have to have a closeout of this unless it's transferred to another one. And of course, you've got to have a bond in place, I mean, that $20,000. Somebody's got to assume that the moment that any, any, any person who's doing any excavation, the permit holder, anytime that bond expires, the permit automatically is, is no longer valid. You know, the, the problem is, this isn't like having a house or having a business. This is a.
It is a business.
Marty, it's not having, it's not a permanent business. There's always an end to a gravel pit. There's a point which gravel pit no longer operates. And that's, and our requirement is that at that point, that pit cannot stay that way, it has to be rehabbed. It's got to be closed out, it's got to shut down, no more operations.
Alright, I have a question for the applicant. If, in the event, time expires, okay? Which would be, before the permit would run out, okay? What necessary steps would you have to, would be compelled to do to close it up? Is there, is there anything there, that's all it might?
Finish your reclamation.
I mean, that's.
Which is not much, but the pit is a pawn, basically.
Right.
That pawn could be continued on by somebody else.
That's why I was asking that question.
It's a good question, but the only thing that kind of, this gets funky or gets a little concerned is in order for his, if he's stepping out of the terms of this.
Agreement.
Disagreement or, or this permit. This permit is with him because once he leaves, or once he ceases operation, he's got immediately to all finish reclamation. That's what we require, and we require it from the applicant.
That's why I was asking him the question.
So if he were to, if you were to want to continue, and he were able to continue right title and interest, the way this, the, the final class can be written is in the event that he is, he wants to, or it comes to an agreement to continue this operation within the confines of, of the excavation, maximum excavation allowed by the permit, which I don't believe you have yet.
Right.
Then, then he can, he can extend this for the full three years and then come back for, you know, for a renewal if he wants to. But if he chooses to close out and say, I'm not going to go down to my maximum debt that this permit grants me. I'm going to close out, re-vegetate, close it down completely, this, this pit is no longer an operational pit. Then that, then it has to cease, we have to go through the reclamation, certification, and the permit now expires.
Okay.
That's.
The second I'm done.
The second you say, I'm done, and you walk off, we have to go through the reclamation, or we have to go through the closeout process.
But we can.
Your conditional use permit will be, have, no longer valid.
I, I don't see why the, the final option, maybe it's permissible in the way this is written, but why wouldn't he be able to sell those rights and the permit provided, you know, all the conditions are met, including the bond and everything else? So why couldn't that be transferred to another user or another business or whatever you want to call it?
Because essentially, they would be able to come in and apply for a permit under their name? Is what would, what would have to occur. They would have to come in and.
Because they're going to have a bond, and the bond is Mark Welch's name.
Right, so they, they submit their own bond, but why, any other business, you don't do that. You don't close down when the current owner decides that he no longer wants it. You can transfer that business to someone else, you can transfer the license for that business to someone else. Why can't you do that here?
Because you're, when, when somebody terminates the permit, you, your ordinance requires it to be closed down. Now, if he wants to sell that before that time, and that person comes into the planning and, and says, okay, here's your $20,000 surety. Here's, I will follow this exact same plan because I, unless I offer it to you differently. He has to follow that exact same, he has to provide that kind of, that kind of surety. He has to release him from all reclamation responsibilities. Because right now, the reclamation responsibility is not on the property, it's on him individually. That's the difference. Unlike a business where you're like leasing a property and, and it's, it's Walmart, they decide they're going to leave, so the property owner is responsible. In this particular case, he's responsible, the leasees is responsible because he's posted a bond, not the property. It's the same thing with Kim and Sergeant. When, when, when that permit, when Sergeant ends that permit, it's Sergeant who closes it down. It's Sergeant who closes down the bond. And before the bond is closed down, we have to certify that it's been rehabbed in accordance to our ordinance. And we don't do that, we get into some ridiculous.
Well, still, who's responsible?
And we don't want the property owner to get a role responsible for rehab and reclaiming in the event that, you know, that he were to violate his permit.
But let's, maybe, you know, this is not worth the discussion, but it's just a point of, of interest. If you were to do that, and there would be someone else who would be interested in finishing that gravel. So, let's say Mark wants to finish that up. Why would he have to reclaim the whole thing only for someone else to come in and unreclaim the whole thing and get his own bond? But that's, just so it makes sense. Why wouldn't you allow someone to come in and take out a bond before it's completely reclaimed and say, okay, now it's on me?
Well, if Mark wants to make that kind of arrangement, that before he, you know, he transfers it, then I guess that would be.
That's my question, why can't you transfer that?
But I think you would be transferred with a new application to us by the new, the new excavator.
Right, but what Ted was just saying is that in honor to close out, you have to completely reclaim it.
And I think, I think Ted was in, under the assumption on that, that, you know, Mark was going to finish it up and do that. But I think if, if Mark were to say.
But it's not just Mark, it's anybody.
I'm, I'm done excavating here, but yet somebody else wanted to. We should require them to come in and make sure they're, especially with conditional use, a bona fide user of the, of the property.
Right.
And not, not somebody that's going to be detrimental to the property or neighborhood.
I agree with that, but all the safeguards have to be in place, true. But Jones has a perfect, perfect scenario there. But in, in a typical pit that's got a steep bank, it needs a lot of reclamation work.
Most definitely.
That makes a lot of sense. Up here, on the piece that I had leased, is just, you weren't at the site walk that day.
Yeah, but it's, it's minimal.
It's just, it's basically a pond, and the only reclamation work now is a tiny red pit left up on the plain bank. And then it's just a, the grim of pond, if you will, that's what's going to be there. So there's really no reclamation.
My concern is, is setting a precedent.
I understand, I agree with you.
Because it applied to other pits as well.
And I, I think it's a good point.
And if I might go back.
If it gets messy, if it gets messy, it has to be some sort of transfer of that responsibility that the board recommends.
Well, before we go on, hey, we started out with simple legal questions.
Right.
Now, we're talking about transferability, which is separate from that. And item four under the resolution in this thing says this permit is not transferable.
Right.
So that, there is another issue there, I guess, that it, there's a potential, if I'm understanding. So what your, what your, what was the instruction, what guidance to the board is that the board could approve this under the normal timeframe of a permit to, to December of 2017.
Ted, was that? Yeah, I just, I just answered his question, sure. I mean, what I, the way this is written, of course, it's a worst prerogative, I have to amend this anyway you want to.
I, I just get hung up on, we, we go through all of the, in the process, and Mark knows that I'm not fighting against him, but he has to absolutely clearly, before this board and before the town, show that he has right title and interest to the property.
Correct.
So now, we're going to approve something past that. That's, that's, I just, seems to me.
Well, if you want to limit, if you want to limit the terms of this permit to one year, you can limit the terms to, because that's what you have, or until the, the end date of your right title and interest, you can limit it to that. And that's, that's simple.
Or to this, or to that maximum of the December, and that was what was recommended at the last discussion.
Right.
Was that we, we approve it to the end of his current lease and then provide a second condition, allowing him to continue on to the December 17th or December of 2017, should he be able to secure an extension to his current. Those were the two things we brought.
And that's kind of what's written there right now.
Pretty much, but not exactly. And then, the other thing is actually to, to the date, is today's date, one year from today. Because today is the 11th, no matter what.
I'm least agreeably distributed the 31st.
I'm just, I'm just.
It's 31st of March or 31st of December?
No, December 31st, I believe, 2015.
I'm just was looking at 11th as the date, because it's dated here. Expires on December 11th, 2017. Well, that's maybe because we, yeah, that's because we would approve.
Okay, but I'm just.
Three years from today.
That's where I was coming at the December 11th being. That said.
So I like the idea of approving it through the, because we, because Mark has right title and interest to a specific date. Having, having the permit run to that date. Or, and put a caveat in it, conditional use expires on whatever that would be, March, December, December 31st, 2015. Unless additional right title or interest is secured by the applicant. Therein, therein the expiration would be December 11th, 2017. How about, how about just, how about just keeping it the way it says right now? This conditional use permit expires in December 31st, 2015. It might be reviewed, or under substantial review by the Planner prior to that date. Because I think that.
It has to be substantial review.
That, that, the way it's written there.
Oh, oh, yeah, but by changing it to the, it comes back on then for the substantial review. If he has an extension, he can show it, if not, he has to close out.
So you're saying amend the, where it says December 11th, 2017 through December 31st, 2015?
Mary?
So I just come back in and say I've got an extension, and I continue doing it based on this application? Now, we don't have to put a lot of caveats, and we'll take that out the transferable, and we'll just leave it at that one.
Move your head, because it's, without the caveat, nobody expires on that.
Right. Without the caveats, then he's got no real good firm backing to say to the Planner after Ted Redway had retired that, no, we sat in a meeting and said that it was okay for me to operate for three years as long as I got right title and interest. Oh, okay, you can do that if you want. I, that's what I would, personally, that's what I would be comfortable with, to, to safeguard his interest if he can get the, the right title and interest. Well, then what do we do about the transferable section? I would scratch that, because then it's, then it expires. If he doesn't secure it through his term of right title and interest, it's done. And it's, you know, you don't have this whole thing of transferable and.
With yours unless you can extend it.
Right.
And if you do, it will expire at the normal three-year period.
So what you would do is this then, okay?
Where's my thing?
Yeah, I'm doing it. This conditional use permit expires in December 31st, 2015, and may be extended to, permanently on December 11th, 2017, provided the applicant provides right title and interest in.
He was Marty when he arrived by then.
No, that's the case, because we have to come back in during, you want to. No.
No.
So we can approve the finding of fact.
Alright.
So approve them as a message.
We got the thing anyway.
You have to vote on every single one of these, actually, these things.
Yes.
So, so is, is this an appropriate time for me to transfer my responsibilities back to the chairman?
I would probably.
I think I will.
Okay, Tom, you're on.
Rich isn't here?
No.
Why do you need to stand? Top, top, unless, unless you're, my question is, top. Yo.
I could press this out. I could press this out.
Since, since you're not currently up for the.
Mister Chair, whoever you are.
Hi.
Do you want to write, read it, or Sean?
I'll do it.
I'm just giving him a line down.
Yeah, I was going to say, point of order too.
I was just trying to.
Vote on the dealer.
You didn't have a read on it.
David got it.
I'm giving him mine, and they have. Go ahead, John. You were.
No, that's right, I just, I, I was going to suggest that we move this forward because we have a lot of work.
I agree with you. Any further discussion on the application? No. Seeing none, seeing no more, we will, what do we need to do here, Ted? Take a vote?
Read, read.
Do we need to, to read it?
I need to.
Every single one of the conditional uses you.
Alright.
Write down to each one of these.
Yep.
And ask for a vote.
Alright. Whereas, on October 23rd, 2014, the Arundel Planning Board received a conditional use application from M Welch and Sons LLC to renew existing mineral extraction permit for a 10.5 acre gravel pit located on the south side Curtis Road on property identified as tax map 23 lot 4 in the R4 district. Whereas on November 1st, 2014, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public site walk of the project site. Whereas on December 11th, 2014, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with Section 9.7.1 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. One, the owner of the property is Stone Ridge Farms Incorporated. Two, the applicant is M Welch and Sons Incorporated and has, who has provided a copy of a contract for removal of sand and gravel material from the designated area 1 and 2 establishing its right title or interest in the property. Three, the property is located on Curtis Road and is identified as Arundel Assessors Map 23 Lot 4. Four, the total property is approximately 74 acres in size with approximately 1,050 feet of frontage on Curtis Road. The lot is located in the R4 Shoreland Overlay and Resource Protection zoning districts. The existing gravel operation located in designated areas 1 and 2 was granted a conditional use permit by the Arundel Planning Board on December 1st, 2011. The area to be, six, the area to be excavated and restored in this revised application consists of a 10.5 acres and is identified as areas 1 and 2 and depicted on maps and plans entitled Grading Plan Amendment, Stone Ridge Farm, Arundel, Maine, as prepared by Atar Engineering, Inc., and dated September 14th, 2014. Seven, the applicant received a manner of revisions to its Site Location and Development Act permit number L-15423-80-C-M dated December 12th, 2012. number L-15423-80-C-M, dated December 12th, 2012, by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, and that order and permit remain in good standing. Eight, the applicant has submitted a bond for reclamation in the amount of $20,000 for the extraction operation and of liability insurance coverage. Nine, the applicant has submitted a borrowed pit and inspection report prepared by Maine DEP, dated July 25th, 2014, confirming that the gravel pit operation is in compliance with its site location permit and applicable mining laws and best management practices in the state of Maine and Maine DEP. The act 10, the applicant has submitted results of 2014 groundwater testing samples made at the established MW-5 monitoring well and prepared by RW Gillespie and Associates, dated May 30th, 2014. The report confirms that none of the targeted extractable petroleum hydrocarbons or volatile petroleum hydrocarbons were evident in the water samples, and iron and magnesium concentrations in the water column are attributable to naturally occurring minerals. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined that application to be in conformance with criteria of Section 9.7.8 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. That the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. This gravel operation is portion of an ongoing gravel extraction operation that has been occurring often on the site since 1989. Surrounding landscape consists of agricultural field uses, and upon restoration, the excavated area will serve as a farm pond in keeping with the general agricultural character and uses of the district.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Or any discussion first? No?
Point of order, do I need to abstain on all this?
Robert's rules, you weren't here at the beginning of the discussion.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Unanimous? One, and one...
Say, extension.
9.7.8.2, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that gravel operation and improvements to land that enhance agricultural production is consistent with the goals for uses in the R4 district as enumerated in the 2007 comprehensive plan.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five in favor, one extension. 9.7.8.3, there, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing ingress and egress has adequate site distance to the east and west on Curtis Road.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five in favor, one extension. 9.7.8.4, there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The use does not require onsite septic or potable water supplies to serve the proposed use.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five, one extension. 9.7.8.5, there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that periodic noise and dust generated by the proposed operations. However, the impact of these potential nuisances is mitigated by the distance of surrounding neighborhood uses. The interposition of a large exposed earth wall on the east side that will contain dust and noise, there is no site lighting to produce glare.
So move to accept?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Uh, nothing, extension? 9.7.8.6, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetated cover are suitable for the proposed use. The operation is within an existing gravel seam, the excavation will contain runoff within the work area, and the existing overburden is fertile enough to support interim stabilizing vegetation. The applicant has submitted an erosion control and sedimentation plan that will be strictly enforced on the site.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five in favor, one extension. 9.7.8.7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No other nuisances will be generated by the proposed expansion. Given the gravel surface of Curtis Road, the planning board waives a requirement to provide a paved apron at the gravel pit entrance as specified in Section 8.5.1.2.1D of the Land Use Ordinance.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five in favor, one extension. 9.7.8.8, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant's proposed grading and restoration plan has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as required in Section 8.5.1D and 9.7, provided the applicant complies with the conditions of approval so executed by this approval.
Move to accept?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Five, yeah, one extension. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of M. Welch and Sons LLC to renew existing mineral extraction permit for a 10.5 acre gravel pit located on the south side of Curtis Road on property identified as tax map 23, Lot 4, in the R4 district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant is restricted to conducting gravel extraction operations between the hours 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. No lighting shall be permitted to aid operations on the site, and therefore, hours of operation will be similarly determined by available daylight. Do we need to vote on each one of these, Ted? Number two, the applicant shall provide annual documentation that the requisite performance bond remains in effect for the life of the permit, and the applicant still carries the required liability assurance. Three, the conditional use permit expires on December 31st, 2015, and may be extended to December 11th, 2017, provided the applicant provide proof of right title and interest. Four, any change from the plan signed by the planning board shall require submittal of revised plans to the planning board. Five, closeout of the gravel operation and release of the $20,000 surety bond shall not occur until the reclamation plan has been completed and approved by the town planner and code enforcement officer. The town planner and code enforcement officer may contract surveying slash engineering consultants to confirm field compliance with approved final grades on the site, and said consultant services shall be paid by the applicant. Six, the $20,000 surety bond shall be maintained in full force during the term of this permit, and any lapse in this maintenance of the surety will constitute cause for termination of the permit.
I make a motion, we accept the findings of facts as corrected.
No, it's the, not the findings, the...
Has read?
No, conditions.
Yeah.
Condition of approval.
Condition of approval.
Has read?
Yes.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? Five, eight, one extension?
I'll nail it to you.
I'm not copying.
Thank you.
I have to amend it.
Okay. You want this back?
Oh, yeah, well, she'll get that one, and I've got one, five bucks, five bucks.
We did roll. So, well, actually, I didn't note for the record that Tom McGinn showed up at possibly, uh, six, seven? I'm gonna transfer responsibilities with me as vice chairman.
Okay. So we have next on the agenda is workshop with the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
What do you want to do?
We're all gonna have to take one part, or two.
Facing each other?
No, we're gonna sit around the table.
Pull your chairs up.
Yes, you did, you said Hobbs' Rules of Order. This is a discussion of review, and if you think, uh, you start at the table, we'll know a lot more of the detail of the comprehensive planning board. Thank you for coming. So, I'm not sure, how, we want to go through each district one at a time?
Well, I, I get the purpose of this, right, meaning basically, so we could tell you what you can do it.
Okay.
All right? Um, so if we go through what we have, what we have done and why, because it's a two-part thing. And then if you folks have questions, and they look, we can help to hear it. And, and I don't have all of my committee working because we have two who have family obligations and one on the mortgage service, and the other one is just missing. Either way. What you got from Ted was a note from, from us per view. It had an overview of what we've been, why, why we are making recommendations for the next. So I'll, I'll start by going over that pretty quickly. We've been focusing on R1, R2, R3, which is the residential district of town. One of the reasons we chose to look at them all was the borders of those districts are basically straight lines. They cut properties in half, or worse. Um, there are, we counted roughly 100 properties that were split lots. So one of the issues we wanted to address was taking care of the split lot situation. The other thing was because they were laid out just in blocks. There are in R1, which is a one acre district, and R2, which is a two acre district, as well as R3, another two acre district, um, a number of lots, roughly numbering about 100, which are 10 acres or more, and in some cases, a lot more. Which meant that you had property owners with significant amounts of land trapped in one acre or two acre walls.
Well, that's the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah, I see. So they got, they can do everything.
No.
Yeah?
Well, no. Let me finish, then perhaps I'll, I'll clarify it, but I obviously haven't yet. We thought we could perhaps give those landowners a review from what restrictions they were dealing with. Um, if you, I'll just go through that first paragraph, that, that kind of sums up mostly what I've said. Split lots, in some cases, it wasn't just split between, well, R2 and R3, it was R1, R4, or R, R3, and the previous industrial district. So there was, there was some serious issues there. Because this was a residential area, we also looked at what the permitted and conditional uses were for the various districts. And we found not a whole lot of differences, but basically, um, things like animal husbandry more than five animal units which are permitted in R4, um, but would not be permitted in R2. And that was one of the places where somebody with 100 acres in R1 might be able to do something with a lot, a large number of animals, but can't because they're in R1 with the one acre restrictions. Calf grounds, golf courses, mineral extraction, sawmill. Not a lot of differences, but enough where we thought perhaps we could make some changes. The specific thing we are proposing to change is, first of all, changing the names of the districts, because we know how much the planning board likes us to do that. Urban and suburban, we decided kind of didn't reflect Arundel at all. It's just not us. So simplify that, just call them Residential District 1, Residential District 2. R3, when we looked at it, there was so little difference between the, the uses for R3 and R2, we said, why is, why does R3 exist at all? So our proposal is to eliminate R3 and blend it into R2, which you'll see reflected on the map when we get to that point. As far as batteries, follow lot lines wherever feasible. Ration after that is to eliminate split lots wherever possible, and also allow and encourage some landowners to decide which district they prefer to be in. And that's something that we're going to address hopefully in our meeting in January, which I would invite you and encourage you to attend. We have one little section where the lots are split between R1, R4, along Lumber Grove. And there's probably six or eight landowners there, if you look at your map, like that, more specifically. And it's basically this little section right in here, where from the eastern trail, south down Lumber Grove. Going towards the one. All right. Um, we're going to invite those landowners in and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. Um, this is your, this is your lot, you are 25% in R1, 75% in R4, for example. Um, this is what your soils look like, what would you like to do? Which one do you want to be in? And then make that line a, follow the lot line, battery is along with some of the others that Ted's already played with. And we'll make the executive decision, you know, we'll do our best, the best we can to get the people involved. We don't have a response, or they just say, do whatever you want, then we'll, we'll draw a line.
Question, if I may.
Sure.
Are these landowners, are they around at this time of the year, or are they flew south?
Well, we'll find that out, when your dad will ask. If it's somebody who's missing, we can catch them a little bit later.
That's the only reason I would...
No, that's, that's a good point. I don't think so, but I may be right, I don't know. But, but what Ted gets a list together for is we'll, we'll know exactly who we're talking about. Okay, um, conditional uses in R1 and R2. Basically, you keep everything the same in terms of what you folks have, I know this is permitted in conditional uses, except to expand conditional uses to include animal husbandry of more than five animal units, equestrian facilities, agritourism, and restricted contractor, tonight should not say storage, contractor yards. I missed that one.
What are, what are restricted, I get that as a question, and what are restricted contractor yards?
It's just, whatever restrictions we put in the original contractor yard provisions. We had limitations on what you could do in various districts, if you recall. We spent six months working on this.
No, I understand, we just don't have a term, restricted contractor yard.
Well, that's, that's the one we've been working with, so, but, uh, my understanding is you have Contractor Yard 1, and Contractor Yard 2, and we're talking, I believe, about Contractor Yard 1, which is more restrictive of the two.
Important, important here though is your, your thought, and I'm not turning the words in your mind. This would not apply to those folks that have one acre but only...
Exist in these residential districts, which are limited to uses along with one and two acre lots, in close proximity to neighbors. Larger lots allow for these uses without negative impacts. This also responds to the needs and requests of some current landowners who have some of those large lots, and would like to do some things that are currently not allowed to do. We also discussed with some length, and would like to recommend, that age restricted housing developments and congregant care facilities be allowed in R1 and R2. The rationale there to reinforce the compact neighborhood concept, which is what R1 and R2 were supposed to be in the first place. If you go to the specific language that we put together, another problem we found with the comp plan was that if you read it in a moment of sheer boredom, there's a section B, which describes all of these districts, and then section C describes them all again, almost identically, but not quite, and in some cases, they contradict each other. So, what we did with those, and this is really our first step, was we took a section from B and a section from C, and we blended the language together and said, "All right, what are we really saying here?" And we rewrote that, so it was in one place altogether, and you don't have to flip back and forth and find out that you don't know what you're reading half the time. So, that gave us the, the basic language. Not a lot of change in terms of the intent of the district, or no change in terms of the density, still a one acre minimum, that's your dwelling unit, one per acre, one per one acre. Higher density possible, two units per acre for residential subdivisions that reserve open space or participate in transfer development rights program, and conform to established design guidelines and performance standards. So, all of that language has stayed the same, still looking at protecting groundwater. If down the road, public water and sewage is available, that allows for higher density. And R1 is certainly a place where that should occur.
Can I make comment on?
Yep.
On that? We have the war purchase, pay and transfer of development rights program, and I do understand that that was in that portion of ordinance. However, the board, and I went to the public, we, we were unable to identify anyone that would be able to look at the value of land being transferred that is equal in the best interest of the town, and/or that transfers of the board is, that we didn't want to get that transferred development rights program.
We may push that issue a little bit, because that's something, we're discussing that now, because now that we're kind of done with this, we're looking at R4. And R4 would be the source of those transfers to R1 and R2. And we haven't thrown the transfer of development rights idea out yet. So, that may come back. If it doesn't, if we decide that it's just unworkable for some reason.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't get a solution to that.
Well, we're willing to give it another shot. There is a draft that was put together by a conservation commission back in 2009, which we can use as a, you know, a base.
I think it was way back then, I mean, we were the only.
Yeah. But that's something that we're going to take a look at, and maybe be able to put something together that would actually work for this town. If it seems unworkable to all of us, then that language can go away very quickly. Any other questions?
Oh, no, I'm just going as you're, you know, I just want to make sure that when, when we're acting as a, as a board, that we're, we're really taking what, the intent of what you said and putting it into proper context, so that we don't have to go back and ask.
Right, I appreciate that. That's what we want to accomplish here. In the last paragraph, we played with this a lot more. Still didn't change a lot of the basic stuff. Permitted non-residential uses include community government uses, non-commercial recreational facilities, and home occupations or businesses. Lot sizes, lot frontages, and front setback requirements would be reduced to allow a more compact neighborhood, providing design standards and all environmental standards are met for age restricted housing and congregant care facilities. So, that's an opportunity to put those facilities in a more cheap-to-jowl, everybody cramming together kind of spot, which actually works for those types of facilities.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I understand all of this except for that last part, and it says, "And all environmental standards are met for the age restricted housing and congregant care." Are they not just two more? If we, if we read that first line as this, permitted non-residential uses include community governmental uses, non-commercial recreational facilities, and home occupation businesses, lot sizes, lot frontages, and front setbacks, which would not apply to the other things. That, that, that first part, lot sizes, frontages, and front setback requirements would be reduced to allow a more compact neighborhood, that applies specifically to the age restricted housing and congregant care facilities. Question?
Yes, sir.
See, government use, that, so that if ever town decides to put in town hauling, then it can go there?
It could.
Is that the reason behind it?
No. That, that language is, we didn't change that, that's been the comp plan.
I think, I think any of our zoning districts allows our government use, right?
Yeah.
That's everywhere. You never mean as per usage.
Yeah, there was, there was no, no change there at all. The only thing we did to that sentence was, one night we took the word permitted out, and then another night we put it back. But other than that, that's original wording.
Can I ask about the, with the age restricted, congregant care facilities? You're allowing for lot sizes, frontage, and setbacks to be reduced, and so, like, how much do, we're going to have to work out the details.
I think that would be up to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but.
Soiling, water, and swamp, made a.
Well, as far as those three things, what, would you, would you like us, what type of numbers you're looking for? Because.
We haven't discussed numbers there at all, because again, that's, that's not our per view.
Can I ask then, why just that type of use you'd allow to those reductions?
Seeing, seeing you don't have to watch schools?
Because, basically, because of the nature of the facilities. Well, because we're not, we're not talking house lots here.
Well, it's everything that was like in a big facility as far as frontage.
Ones like, like condo. But his question goes to a compact neighborhood, why?
Right.
Why, why wouldn't one be different?
Yeah, why, why could one be right up at the street, and all the rest of the residents have to be 50 feet back? Just curious about why that one type of use.
Is that a, is that your dad?
I was enjoying it over here.
I'm sure you were. I'm watching you enjoy it.
Okay. The concept that the board is, that the comp plan can use grappling with this, was recognizing, first of all, the idea that the R1 districts are in fact, in fact, supposed to be high density districts, that's why they're in located. There's not a lot of one left in the R1 district. And that the kinds of uses that you're looking at in that situation are high density uses. There's nothing that is better suited for high density use than an age restricted community or a congregant care facility, mainly because they, they have to have high density in order to survive economically and physically, because they're, they're very intensive uses.
I, I'm not questioning the density, that makes sense.
Why would you have, or why would you have the setback? Maybe that's what's sticking up to me. I don't think the setback is as much as it is reduced, reduced lot sizes. What you're going to do is, maybe let's just focus on the front setback point, why, why that? Because you'd have that.
How's, how's, and then.
Age restricted, so. I would say, I mean, in my opinion, the, the larger scale congregant care facility, I see where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Why not? You know, we don't want to necessarily encourage that to be right up along the road.
Yeah.
However, if somebody were to be putting in a, not assisted, a, a restricted housing, and you're trying to get everything much more into a, a smaller scale, tighter development, so you've got less front yard, I can, I can buy at that argument, where you're, you're coming in with a bona fide neighborhood, not just necessarily closer up to Limerick Road, for instance.
Maybe there's a detail. I agree, if it's a neighborhood type thing, but if it's just a, just a big wall of, of a building.
Right.
For age, most, age restricted would probably be more like condo neighborhood style, but the.
Yeah.
Family housing, congregant care. That's just an institution.
No, it's, it's.
But it could be.
It's, it's, it could be.
We can't make them be a.
Look at Honeyland.
It's what you do with your, your ordinance. It's what the planning board does to implement their vision. And what they're talking about here is, is most congregant care facilities are not a single facility. There are multitude of different levels of services that are provided. That's what makes them so effective, is because you move from a cottage environment, which is compatible with the R4 neighborhood concept, all the way up to the institution that you're talking about, where you go from basically independent living, to assisted living, to home health care, to hospital care, essentially. You go up to that, and your, your facility, your Alzheimer's facility, or your intensive care facility, will be a bigger building, but usually will not be the one that's at the, the front along the Limerick Road. And that's something that certainly this board could make, make provisions to ensure that the character that you're trying to create along Limerick Road, or any private road that goes in there is preserved, so that that neighborhood look is, is preserved.
Well, it gives you a lot.
You don't need to labor, because this is discussing a lot to make. I just, I just want to make sure that they understood the intent, but we'd have to have some standards to.
That would have made it steadable, would.
Yeah, right. May provide flexibility, or something along.
Maybe.
You know, would provide flexibility.
Yeah, it would be ridiculous.
Yeah. Would you accept the word "could"?
Could, yeah, yes.
So, that, that W was supposed to be a C anyway.
Not in any of my drafts, but it could, it could be.
I thought that's a new word spell.
Okay. We're, we're good so far? All right. Uses that generate significant traffic noise or similar impacts will be excluded, that's not any different than the last line, again, respecting the fact that this is a residential neighborhood. Small scale agricultural and natural resource uses should be allowed, new agricultural uses subject to reasonable standards to protect adjacent residential areas, reflects the same attitude. And then this last part is where we went a little nuts and made some changes. Animal husbandry, equestrian facilities, agritourism, and restricted contractor yard uses should be allowed, subject to conditions including minimum appropriate acre requirements, minimized impact on surrounding lots due to odor noise and traffic, and required appropriate setback screening and buffering. For animal husbandry, the species of animals be taken into consideration regarding those conditions. Now, that's going to require a great deal of discussion and common sense on your part, because you have to look at what's appropriate, again, in a residential neighborhood, but here you are, one acre lots all down here, and then you've got 100 acre parcel. What can that guy do when 100 acres is not going to impact the one acre lots next door?
Depends on who's there first.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, because if you have farmer's rights.
That's not, that's not the issue we're addressing.
They're looking at.
Right, this is future use.
Yes, but I said, if the farmer's there first, then everybody else wants to move around it.
Oh, I would never argue that point with you, Marty, I agree completely, but that's not this scenario. Right now, we're talking about somebody who's got 100 acres, who perhaps is not using it for animal husbandry, and then wakes up one morning and says, "I gotta have calves." Right now, right now, we can only have a limited number, limited number of animal units. And what we're proposing is, if you have the acreage to sustain it, the sky's the limit, as long as you don't adversely impact the residential neighborhood in which you happen by accident to be stuck.
I don't, I don't need more acres to put 50 pigs on a piece of property.
That's right, you don't. You could even raise them indoors, and no one would know you had them.
Maybe he does.
But most of the people.
You know they have them.
I, I.
That's why.
That's going to take a lot of minutia.
No, no, but that's why you've got to look at it.
Our discussion has been so extensive, that the pig is now our unofficial committee mascot. One has shown up on the agenda each night for the last several meetings. It's a long story, I won't labor it tonight.
Watched the chicanery on our, our resident board.
Is it a cat?
However, I can attest to the fact that you can raise 80 pigs on 10,000 square feet without people, your neighbor. Do it right.
I'm more concerned about the people who don't do it right.
Well, then those people are going to be in violation of one or another rule you folks write.
But theoretically, like, right now, if you have a land disorder, and you have somebody with 100 acres, and they want to do a rabbit tree, they could eliminate it to five rabbits.
No, 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 no. An animal unit is not one area.
It's by weight.
It's by weight. They still have plenty of rabbits, yes.
They could have a hundred rabbits.
But, but, you know, it is, it does impact if I'm limiting the number in, in that zone, you know, where, yeah.
You've got the llama fund, because.
Yes, right.
She's kind of stuck.
Right. Some of the things that, that as you, as you consider all of what you're going to have the right to back this up, so this all passes, in regards to the animal species, would be just the size of the animal. If somebody wants to put, you know, have chickens as opposed to cattle, that, that makes a difference in terms of the impact on the property.
That's why they have to wait at the beginning.
Well, it's not just the weight, it's all, where, and that brings me to the next point, where are they going to be, indoors or outdoors? If you're going to have, you know, laying hens in a, in a barn, you could do that on a lot less acreage and not impact your neighborhood than if you have, you know, 100 head of cattle wandering around the lawn. So, that's why we put in the species of animal is, is going to be a major consideration.
But 5,000 chickens is, can be quite an impact.
Right, they're indoors.
Well, it's, right, because you have to get to.
The trucks coming to get the eggs.
Manure disposal and traffic.
Just the manure.
Yes, there's a lot, a lot of pieces to this.
Question on this, will the llama fund be able to expand in this? I mean, just as it's, as it's written, I'm just saying, would she be able to, because she's limited now.
There is, there is nothing in what we have written that should limit her, as long as.
Or would that allow her to expand?
As long as what you write allows the expansion without impacting her neighbors.
There are no neighbors.
I think conceptually, from what I'm hearing, it, it would provide some flexibility to a neighbor or a resident like the llama.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yes. Or, or anyone else who has.
Be your job. Not mine, I got it up.
Good sized piece of property within R1.
If I may, may I?
Certainly.
I, I think the intent, what was driving this, was recognition of various farms that are existing, that are actual farms, that are operational, that are limited by current zoning ordinance restrictions, because they happen to be in R2 or R1, or the high density for us, the high density residential neighborhood. The committee thought very seriously about enabling such farms to continue to expand and profit, and others to take advantage of their larger lots, who might want to do, engage in agriculture in a way that, that could preserve the intent of these districts, which is high density. And leading it to the planning board to come up with all the caveats and how to do that, but right now, those caveats don't exist in comprehensive plan, and the intent is to open it up and say that such uses should be allowed, provided, and provided is what we're going to have to work hard on.
Well, David, but work into detail takes a lot of discussion.
But right now, the comp plan doesn't allow it, that's the point. Comp plan was not allowing that. You have 5,000 acres, comp plan, it lends you to five, you know, three acres.
They're coming to us with the overall idea.
Yeah.
It's going to be up to us to implement it.
And suggest that he changes too, that you know, as far as, you know.
One of the things that we were, we were doing is, in, in, in looking at the comp plan as it has been in place for all the years.
engage in agriculture in a way, uh, that, that could preserve the intent of these districts, which is high density. And leaving it to the planning board to come up with all the caveats and how to do that, but right now, those caveats don't exist in the comprehensive plan, and the intent is to open it up and say that such uses should be allowed, provided. And provided is what we're gonna have to work hard on.
Well, David, but work into detail will take a lot of discussion.
Sure. But right now, the comp plan doesn't allow it, that's the point. Comp plan was not allowing that. You have five thousand acres, comp plan, it lends you to five, you know, three acres.
They're coming to us with the overall idea.
Yeah.
It's gonna be up to us to implement it.
And, and. And suggest that he changes too, that you know, as far as, you know.
One of the things that we were, we were doing is, in, in, in looking at the comp plan as it has been in place for all the years, um, there are, are bits and pieces of it that don't make a lot of sense given what a rubble is as a community. And going back just to the fact that, you know, R one is just, okay, take ten, I say this all the time, the boundary is drawn with crayon. It's a square, you know, it's a rectangle. And it really mattered whose property it went through, whether it was good, bad, or different, and some people with large lots just got trapped because they happened to be hit by the crayon. Um, and for all of these years, they have faced limitations that perhaps we can now rectify. Um, I suspect that some of the people who have large parcels will never take advantage of this freedom, so be it, but the people who would like to certainly should be able to. It also expands the, the economic base of town. Um, if there are more, you know, opportunities for animal husbandry or agritourism or the other things that we've written into this, then that's another source of taxes.
Question, and this may be totally out of cuff, but we have this R four on the other side of the railroad tracks, resource protection, which actually it is. Would that allow animal or husbandry, uh, use there? Because it's only access through Kennybunk Port.
It's already allowed.
There is nothing really there, but that's why I'm asking.
R, R four is not a problem with regards to that.
Along here.
Yeah, but access is the landlord's problem. The comp plan can't change that, but the, the, the R four district, anywhere in town allows the animal husbandry.
Full blown.
Full blown.
Because I had always understood, there was not allowed to be really in this zone at all, because on this side.
They just can't get there.
Yeah. It's not that, it's not that it's disallowed, it's just it's very difficult.
It has a parishes.
There is, there is a crumber's farm, a garden back there, they used that council, they, they somehow got a permit to cross the tracks.
Well, there is a spot that is legal.
Yeah.
Across it.
They were kind of rent-possed.
They're rent-possed. But the rest.
It's all good for egg. At the curve.
They're not renting new ones.
Yeah. Well, they allow intensive cash, so if you wanted to subdivide off there and try to get a great crossing, kind of crossing.
So, is that the terms?
There, there's a lot of spots in town which, you know, if you just look at the map, you say, wow, what a perfect place for, but then by the time we look at physical obstacles like railroad tracks and soil conditions and dozen other things, you realize that you can't do it anyway. But again, we can't make that decision because that, that's a parcel by parcel decision. Um, the other thing, and, and we, we kind of fought with this ourselves a little bit, is we tend to use the term agriculture as an extremely broad term, including something like dairy farming, but it really isn't. Agriculture means dealing with the land itself and growing crops, and certainly dairy farming has a part of that to it because you're raising corn or hay, but animal husbandry involves the actual animals. And the other thing is that as you, as you have your discussions, animals are basically anything that isn't a plant. So, that would include aquaculture, John's ever popular fly farm concept, um, any kind of animal at all. So, it's a very broad based list of possibilities. There's no charge for the blood here.
Thank you. I won't be building it in a rubble.
Well, forget it, no four farms here, then. Take that out.
As long as the address says a rubble, you can have it in Kennybone, but as long as the address says a rubble.
I think one of the other things that we were looking at too, is while we were looking at the language of the comp plan, one of the things that we kind of chewed out was, has it been working? We've had it in place since, what, ninety-five, was that something?
Well, yeah. That's what we're.
Right, and has it, has it been doing what we, the intent was, which the R one has not been where the growth has been, got for, it's been where all the subdivision's are going. So, what can we change to make it a little bit better as far as, to really make it reflect what we want to see happen and not what has been happening, who hasn't been, hasn't been working?
Very good point, I'm glad you got that out.
Where you want to happen would still be the R one, or of course, if it's happening in R four, could.
We have R four yet.
Well, R four, we're just.
That brings me to a discussion about.
Then that brings me to a question, you know, noticing some things on the map. Is there, has there been discussion of modifying the districts to, say, expand the R one? I'm looking at this, it looks like down Log Cabin Road or River Road, where there's several small lots cut out way along the two roads, would that be an appropriate location for R one to be instead of R four? Just wondering if that had been discussed? How, you know, what the extent of the conversation was with the, these zones?
All right, what, what we, what we did basically was we, we started with the existing boundaries and just, as I said before, came to the conclusion that we need to follow lot lines. And that will change some of it, in fact, on the addition that you see here, it's already changed that a little bit. Um, so you have, you know, just not, not as many straight lines and a lot more cutouts for those particular lots. In terms of making a major shift from one district to another, apart from just, just getting rid of R three, which I'm sure we'll do in a moment, um, we really haven't discussed that because we haven't gotten to R four yet and analyzed this peculiar problems. Uh, it may be that that is a recommendation that we come down the line with. Um, but then again, that's gonna be another case where it's get the landlords in, how do you feel about this? My suspicion is, based upon past experiences of having comp plans shot down in flames, that if you're going to take any group of people and say we're going to reduce your, yeah, three acres to two acres, or two acres to one, or change it from one to two or two to three, that's where you get the most resistance because they're, they've made plans on what they can do with their land now.
One thing that we did discuss, we just started the R four discussion, but one thing we did discuss is the fact that right now, the land use ordinance requires you to do the cluster subdivision, and we were talking about people who have a hundred acres that might want to do, you know, gentleman farmer type of thing, or ten acre farms or something like that, and that's really kind of not allowed. And, and that keeps the rural atmosphere a lot more rural than the cluster subdivision, and so that was one of the things that we started discussing in the R four was whether we should really stick with this cluster subdivision in every way, or can we be more flexible in law, you know? So, that's just the start of our discussion on that.
Yeah, I think that's the next link.
Yeah.
And I want to commend you, I'm even thinking about probably eliminating R two. But what I, I'd ask, I guess, is to look at one and two. The second, the whole second portion is exactly the same for uses.
Oh, it is, yes.
Word, word, word for word.
I was about to go to that, point that out, yes.
The only, the only difference is in one, you can have one in the one for two, and the other you can have the two, one in, in two acres. I mean, that, that's such a small, small thing based on, you know?
Almost the same thing, you gotta change that.
I mean, that would give, I don't know, there's something food for thought, but.
Well, would your suggestion be just to eliminate R two as well?
You just have a residential.
Residential.
This is a residential area, and this is where we want residents to be built, and the minimum is that, at a one acre, you can get higher if you do up with these other things like you wrote in two, you know, or in one. It says that you could get a higher density for, for a certain thing.
Yeah, I think you might get a lot of resistance though, you know, from people who are in the R two, perhaps don't want to see half acre lots next to it.
Oh, I don't, see, I don't think there would, the minimum is one acre. You can get a higher, you can get a higher, it says you can get a higher density.
Yeah.
So, right now, right now, everybody in R one has to have one acre, or they can't do any. Everybody in R two has to have two. So, now, everybody in R two would have one, so it's beneficial to them. Anything they were planning, they can still do, and there's the potential for this other. I don't, I don't know, for me, it is, I'm just hoping by what was written, what is here, and the similarity between three and, and two was striking because that was truly equal, that was two and two. But with the opportunity to increase density, should you adhere to certain provisions of the ordinance, and that, and, and the board could work that out, I think, pretty, I don't know if that, you.
Well, I, obviously, I think the board is aware that I, I like incentive based open anyways, you know? In order to get, get a better design, that means the town's desire to have more rural looking town. But at the same time, there's one thing we cannot exclude from our consideration, and how much it really drove and where those boundaries go is something I'm not sure of because I think a lot of it's historical, but we also, we also have something called carrying capacity of the land. In so many places in this town, we have soils that don't support or acres on it, simply because they're poor quality.
Condition of, of that particular property.
No, it's, no, it's more uniform than that. You have scanting soil, and the whole subdivision doesn't matter if it's this lot or that lot, that's a bad soil. You're gonna have premature failure of septic systems, you're gonna have high threats of col, even a hundred feet, you're gonna have high threats.
But they have to provide soil samples, wouldn't they? I mean, if you're doing a subdivision.
Right now, quite frankly, you can pour, with our plumbing code, you can pour the lot in casco. Pretty close.
All right, I got the district of comp.
It's just, well, that's something you want to investigate, and the issue is when you continue to, if you have very high density and poor soils, you're gonna do a lot of water displacement, Jamie, tell me if you're wrong on somebody's.
No, I'm loving it.
You're gonna have water displacement, you're gonna have a lot of septic systems, it would be much closer than it would be in two lot zone, you might have problems finding adequate soils on a one acre lot in order to put a septic system. I think that may have been some of the things that was driving where one acre was, where two acre was. I saw.
I think you're, you're probably, you're probably right about the condition of the soils, but I think the way this was drawn was, was with the, uh, the one where the new road.
The.
It was just because that's where the, the density was.
Okay, well, that, that's.
That's the question.
And also on Limerick Road, it was, it had to put some, put it someplace where we just happened to put those, but it didn't have anything to do with the soil conditions. It should have. Well, I'll tell you honestly, the reason why I asked.
If they, if the conditions in a, in a certain area are generally poor.
How do we know where those are?
Oh, they don't say it, it's a slow map, we can identify.
But the condition, but the condition for, for a one acre or a one acre multiple units can be the submission of satisfactory soils, soils that don't show, there's only three, right, that are bad for most, I can't remember all of them.
There's like eighteen.
There's eighteen. There, no, there's, I know there's nine, that's why I said I can't remember them, but there's only three that are bad, really bad for building.
Uh, there's more, we have more than.
Here, in the rubble?
Yeah. We got Poneck, Scenic, Raven, Obnomer, uh, some programs are good. We have, uh, Sicko, um. Vega Monkey Pete, even have some Vega Monkey Pete, which we're not supposed to have in your campus, because he ain't come, we got, um, that's out on the power lines. But no, the reason, and you're right, Bob, and we can do it that, that way, and, and, and what you're talking about is, is requiring somebody, if you want, if you want a higher density, you're gonna do a high, well, we haven't had subdivision one, but you're gonna do a high intensity soil survey, you're gonna do groundwater investigation, right, you're gonna do a groundwater monitoring, groundwater hydrology, uh, study, determine how much you can really carry on that land, and if you can do it, and we, we kind of do this with our cluster right now.
Exactly.
If you can do this, then we'll be, because that's how they determine what.
Set it tight to bad land, build on the good land.
And if we want to do that, that's true.
Yeah, okay, that, I don't know.
It becomes more and more performance based, which makes your job.
I think it's flexibility and stand up with a state facing, it actually increases everybody.
Right.
Everybody, you can do what you could do before, the animal one.
But how expensive does that get to be if I have, if I'm an homeowner and I own, like, a two acre lot, and, you know, I, how expensive does that get if I want to try to show that I could put two houses on there? If I could do all of these studies, it, you know, that could, you know, yeah.
You're not gonna do it, this is gonna be protected.
Right, that, that's what I need, you know, so.
So, this is really geared more towards somebody who's actually.
You have to do the development. And we're talking about small villages, you know, if I'm gonna split a lot for a child or something, I, I can't afford to, you know, do all of these groundwater studies and.
But if you're going, no, but if you're going to split a lot, then you're only building one house on the lot. It's only when you get into, I gotta go wherever, four or more, that you'd have to do all of that stuff. Is that how it works?
Well, see, not if you want, no, not if you want to get a density bonus.
Well, yeah, no, no, but I'm saying for the typical homeowner that has property, that wants to split off for a family member, wants to split off the cell, wants to do whatever they want to do, if the minimum acre is an acre, you could split off an acre, and somebody could, they have to come in, every, every homeowner, the new owner of that property would have to show that there is adequate, well, septic and, uh, suit.
Yeah, but you can't see, the, the one thing you can't do with family divisions, and, and you brought up an interesting point about where our divisions are and what kind of subdivisions are happening. We also need to recognize the most active type of subdivision we have in the town are most family divisions. That's why this board doesn't see them, but most, most, like, new lots created in this town are created by family division, are created by, um, the five year olds who have a piece of land. That's how it's done, and they're always gonna be based on the minimum lot size. And we do not have, when you have a family division, it is exempt from that residential density. So, if you can find a little piece of land that pop at the, you know, three infiltrator zone, pump up to it, and then you have well over here that barely makes the one hundred feet, or you can get an exemption from DEP, or excuse me, from, um, Health and Human Engineering, for less than one hundred feet, and you can put a house there. But the problem is what happens with cumulative effect of all of these divisions occurring over twelve? That's where you can meet some problems.
Water runs downhill, but neither one.
Yeah, usually, usually the fifteen thousand dollar indoor swimming pools, otherwise it's called basements.
Our current, our current standards address some of that, and the divisions, but neither of these go to the detail that you're, you're talking.
Oh, no, no, because they just.
That's a hint one, all of that discussion. The good discussion.
And I think we also get some pushback on, even though, yeah, certain people would be interested, others who prefer a, a little more semi-rural type of environment would push back if there was, was a substantial threat that all of a sudden a neighbor with, say, three acres could then look to legitimately split and, and they would be approached upon a little.
I, it's just, just my.
And you're.
I think you're gonna get a lot of pushback from people who are in the R two zone. If I buy a house in the R two, because I'm wanting in a neighborhood where there's at least a couple of acres per lot, I've got a little separation from my neighbor. Suddenly, you try to change it to an R one, where you can really build it off, like, stop falls.
I think you're gonna get a lot of pushback from that.
How long, eight?
I mean, I think within that notwithstanding any of the, the technical and environmental type of things would be the, the biggest concern I would have.
I, I, I personally think that if we were to just say, okay, we have a residential district that a lot sizes one acre, this one would pass. Um, for, you know, exactly the reasons taken.
But also, too, like with your R two district, you're also limiting the burden on the town.
Yes, that's another excellent point.
Because to a.
Well, yeah, school.
Where you've got marginal septic fields puts a burden on the code enforcement officer to deal with things and staff.
I'm actually less concerned about the burden on me and more concerned about the young bride who's standing there crying in my office, that's what I'm concerned about.
Why?
Because your basement's flooded, our septic system just failed after five years ago, that's what I'm concerned about.
That's not our problem.
No, it's my problem.
No, so, I mean, your problem, but it's not our problem, it's the planning board.
I'm just saying, I'm looking at this sort of.
Well, you.
The hand, the towel.
It, it is a problem because, because it comes into the perception of.
Are codes appropriate?
Right.
Do I do that?
Recreating a good environment.
Is this, is it a-
Is it a good, you're a community?
Yeah. I think you're saying, I don't try to decide that.
That's not a, well, that's good, though, because if you had the same thing in our meeting, you know, bring it up now, I'm rather willing to have it.
Can I ask a question as far as the R2 and the R3 being combined?
Yep.
Is what, what, are we losing, what's being, uh, left behind as far as those two come? It's all gonna be just whatever's in R2 now, and so-
Well, the, the, the R3 acreage, what used to be R3, just gonna get rolled into R2 and called R2.
Was that, was it two acre? No, it was two acres.
R3 was two acres.
It was two acres.
The, the only difference was minimal language. Let's see if I can back up to the right meaning.
I always thought it was one acre, two acre, three acre, and four.
A lot of you, I think that, that's the reason why we wanna change this.
For five years on the board.
I don't wanna make it two lots, right?
I don't, I don't know why we ever broke up.
The, the only substantive sentence in, between R3 and R2 was, in R3, all subdivisions and five or more lots are required to be quote-unquote conservation subdivisions in which 50% or more of the developable land is set aside as permanent open space.
And we wanted, and that's clusters of it. And that's what we wanted to rid of anyway.
That will be kept into this new-
Nope.
We've never done that. Let's be clear, we've never done that in the R3. We have no specific standards for 50% required open space in the R3. We don't have it. Cluster subdivision doesn't do it.
Wait a minute. Clusters of open space require one septic.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you cluster, whatever you clusters, put it in a set aside. It's not 50%, never is, never has been, never will be. It's not 50%.
It's what the board determines.
Well, it's what the applicant provides the board with and says, yeah, but what, just, just listen. It's not a mandate that 50% of the land, they, when they do their calculations, they don't start to say, I've got 30 acres here, 15 of this has gotta be in open space. They don't start that way. Reverse, they do it the opposite, they say, what's, what's my maximum capacity I can have with two acres on it? Now, if I do, um, you're gonna let me make those smaller lots with less frontage, which is gonna reduce the, the length of my road and therefore reduce my costs. And whatever acreage-
Is left.
Is left goes into open space. So whatever, if you, so, but that's not always 50%.
Yeah, right.
Usually it's not. So we never have adopted that, I wanna make that clear. That has never been adopted by the planning board, that provision.
What about Talbot Woods? Because there was so much of that was left into open space.
True, but what, that's not, first of all, that's in the R2. And second of all, that was a lot more open space, because they, they chose to make them small lots. Very small lots, which you left. But what I'm saying is that the requirement that be 50% has never been in any of our standards.
It was their plans.
It was their plan.
They couldn't make those lots bigger. They, they decided to have them smaller and set aside.
Not dropping the cluster division, the cluster development requirement.
Not completely, no.
Okay, just the 50%?
No, we, we are, because the, the, the R3 becomes R2. So whatever it says here for R2 applies now to all of that land, R2 and R3. R3 doesn't exist in our proposal.
I guess my question, are we combining the best of both, or are we just going to weigh out three? Or whatever?
Well, the only things were like, if there was what you could do, was like the-
Yeah, there was one thing.
Sawmill.
Sawmill and-
Campground.
No, it was something else, excavating, mining, mining.
Yeah, it's mining.
Mining, yeah. Sawmill and something.
We bought the R3.
That was the, I think they were really different.
Yeah, well, campground, golf course, golf course, mineral extraction, sawmill, and-
And now it can be considered with adequate buffering effects.
Right.
Or is there?
Well, it is, it is, campground and the golf course and mineral extraction and sawmill are kinda out of the question. But they gained with the agit tourism and the animal husbandry and the other things. So, you know, there is a bit of a trade-off. But, you know, we, we battled this around, one of the things that we did consider briefly was taking part of R3 and pushing it into R2, and another section of pushing it into R4. And then we've kinda said, let's not make this hard.
Say everybody's going to R2.
Right, it's, you know, and if we have a major outcry, and everybody says, no, 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 then we have to rethink it, but that's our proposal.
How many gravel pits do we have?
Done.
Right?
We had one, that was off the center road in the back of the line.
I was gonna say, I don't think there's anywhere that exists. We have one, two in R4?
Oh, we have three in R3.
Yeah.
Now, and then funnel pits, too. Funnel pits exist.
Okay. Along this changing of everything, are we allowing any new, that they were restricted before, to have any new campgrounds?
No.
So campgrounds are, are gonna be obsolete in this town?
No.
No, in the R3.
It's still allowed on R4.
It's still allowed on R4, but-
And the DB1 and DB2 and BI.
Right, and I don't think there were any lots in the R3 that we could see-
I'm just, just, I'm just asking overall, because the last comprehensive plan, that was one of the things, besides businesses not being allowed in the residential zones, per se, also, too, it was campgrounds.
Yeah. The only place that campgrounds were allowed were in R3 and R4.
Right, and then conditional in R3.
Yeah, conditional in R3 and, and, you know, R4.
So, is it gonna be back conditional again?
No, it's not, well, in R3, it would be being allowed in R4.
That's what I'm saying, is it gonna be conditional?
I don't know, we, I-
That's why I have to talk with-
We haven't gotten R4 yet, we haven't got finished on R4 yet.
Now, he's asking if it was gonna be conditional in the R2, he's saying R3.
No.
But it's in the, that, that was taken up by DB2, where it's permitted.
Yeah.
Which is not passed yet. No, I don't, none of this is that.
Well, the DB2 actually has been passed.
Yeah, in the complan, the DB2 is passed. So.
But not by the board yet.
Yeah, yeah.
In the complan.
The complan has done it.
But it's not in the zone.
Not, not in the zone. No, but this is, this is-
And you're still not splitting lots. The devil, the devil has agreed.
Love presenting excellent.
And, and with following your lines, how are you also doing a lot in DB1 and DB2 if it's, if they're two zones? Are you still splitting the lots?
And we're giving those lines the way they were approved by the voters. We're not changing DB1 and DB2 lines at all.
Because that's already-
That's been, that's already been approved, and we're just doing-
But it didn't go to the voters yet.
Yeah, the complan did.
The complan did, for the five mixed-use districts. DB1, DB2, Gateway, Alfordon District, and Townhouse Corner.
This is the map, essentially, this is, well, except for now the R2s, the R2 shows, this is the map that was approved, there's the complan, with the complan. Except now, we've changed some of the boundaries on, to follow lot lines, and also, uh, and some proposals in the residential districts. But the, you'll see the DB1, DB2, BI, GW, and D, and at the bottom, out of sight, is the Townhouse Corner. Those lines are the same as, uh, those are, have been approved, those are lines that the planning boards has basically approved on the end of the stuff. The planning board has.
Okay.
As of on the vote. And it also includes my, the changes that the planning board requested, uh, regarding the Fritz properties.
The why?
The Fritz properties, those are also showing here. You'll notice them along, if you notice the BI line, look at the BI line, it's clinging, follows lot lines again.
All of, yeah, all of the, all of these lot lines and the rest are from, like this legend.
Yeah.
You got out of ours. This has the corridor protection overlay.
Yeah, that's still-
We don't have one anymore.
Yeah, but this is the complan, this is the complan. Still the complan.
Still the complan, yeah.
It needs to be in our regulation, then it was taken out in June, no, before 2012. Our 2012 regulation no longer has it.
It had to be done before that, because it wasn't here when I arrived.
Yeah, right. That, that, we used to, we used to have the overlay district up there, and that was taken out a long, long time ago. I was just surprised to see it.
Because it's not taken out with the-
It's still in the complan.
Is it gonna be in the complan?
In other words, it's-
We may take it out.
This is the complan map, this is the complan zoning map, not the official zoning map.
The complan, no, and I can't remember the year, but it was before the 2012 revision, because if you go through all of, if you go in 70, I think you're right. That's where we had the, when the uproids. Because I've asked this before, but it's not in our current ordinance.
Nope.
In the establishment of districts, it's not in any of the descriptions of any of the districts, and it's not included in any of our proposed revision. And the reason is because it used to be there, and there was a lot of discussion, which you probably remember. Because I was a favorer.
I remember.
But it was voted out, and so I, I, when I saw it on here, I-
I don't know why you guys are taking things out when it's still the complan, you're not supposed to do that.
You're not supposed to do that, take it out of the complan.
When, when, when the vote, when the voters say take it out, you take it out.
If it's in the complan, doesn't the zoning plan have to address it?
Yeah, it's-
It's sure, but it's a, it's a-
It's a great, it's a good idea.
Obviously, because you have this in there since 2007.
My, yeah, my point being, you, there used to be a description, there used to be an overlay.
Gotcha.
The overlay protection went before, they voted it out, it got out of, everywhere else in the ordinance except for this cover, on the official map. That's all I'm saying, take it out of there and everything is right.
There's a recommendation of the complan committee from the planning board saying-
Take it out.
Take it out.
Unless, well, unless-
We'll consider it.
I mean, don't worry, we're considering this right now, right in the midst of the R4 district.
Yes, that, that, we, we, well, in fact, we actually kind of already mentioned it, but, you know, we'll consider it. So, in a nutshell, R1, R2, some expanded uses for those lots that are larger than 10 acres. Um, if you think it's appropriate to bump that down to five, we could take that up to, for discussion, but we thought 10 is a good starting point. Uh, and we also, we did some serious analysis, I mean, John Dell in particular, went nuts with his computer and did all of this, which you can get a hold of through Chad, but it shows up-
That's the one, did you send it out?
Lot sizes.
Yeah, I think I saw that.
Yeah.
Who, who is the-
No. No. Um, anyway, so we, we took a serious look at what, how many lots there were, on which sizes, we put 10 in a recent cutout code. Um, but that's not far from the snow, as far as we're concerned, if you make something smaller, it'll work. Um, the other thing, you know, obviously, expand those uses, follow the lot lines. And I guess our overriding issue was allow property owners to do as much with their property as they can if they have the acreage to sustain it.
And, and the, the wherewithal to be able to buffer.
Right, right.
Well, if you have the-
They're actually, oh, there is a breakdown on those maps, uh, all of the lots, lots of color-coded with a legend showing what the approximate for each asset is.
Yeah, that's how we're gonna get this out.
Yeah. We slid our 10 acres or more, though.
All the, all the dark colored ones.
The, the dark, dark color or even the green ones?
Green, orange, yellow.
10 to 19 acres is the yellow, uh, basically 20 to 30 acres is the orange color, the light orange. The blue color is-
30 to 40.
30 to 40.
The ones that are less than 10.
Purple color is 40 to 50, and then the, the orange color is 50 acres.
So it's the green that's less than 10 on that?
Green is 10 down.
Yeah.
Okay. Then R1 is all for you.
Well, actually, it's a yellow, yeah, yeah, it's 10 and down from the green. Actually, we have, I think we got a map of the whole town, which is scary. Lots over 10 acres. That John's map now used for the whole town. This gives you an idea of what the whole town looks like in terms of lot sizes.
Oh, wow. You're a lot of room, a lot of room for a lot of business.
Did you, yeah, good enough, that's all I thought.
Yeah, it didn't make that good, yeah.
Probably not close enough, we did.
So whites are less than, are 10, are less than 10 acres. Use your same color code, are you today?
Kinda looks like we have one zone.
Well, the past, it used to be 3 acres, remember?
It's all mixed, it's, it's pretty much evenly distributed, so it's one zone.
Why not really one zone then? It's a different business.
Now, looking good if you're looking, if you're looking.
If you look at another map, I guess.
It's kind of interesting myself, but.
Well, that's why I like that one.
It was one that showed only the maps of lots less than 10 acres. Here we go, here, here's the reverse of that one. It shows you the lots less than 10 acres.
Are colored.
All along the road. Well, you can see where the density is, too, it shows you where you have existing residential-
It's all along your roads, it's all around your-
Yeah, that's always the way it's gonna be.
Yeah.
And until the roads are completely filled up, that, and as soon as that happens, then you're gonna start seeing more and more, more pressure to go in. More roads, exactly, more pressure to go into the inlet. And we're at that point, we're starting to get to the point where all of the capacity along roads is pretty much, of available lots is pretty much taken up. So that's the reverse of the other map. So that's something that certainly can help the board. So with John's done, done for every single, every single district.
Are those available on your website or on your website or online?
Then we, yeah, well, John gave it to you, you sent yours, I don't think I sent mine to him.
John's available, but not on your-
John, just wondering if you put it on your, um, so that number, like the content, you know, you think, when the committee gets, you don't want to put out to the public, I know that, like-
Why not, it's public document.
Yeah.
I could put it on the, I could, I could talk to Todd about putting all these maps on, but you, you don't have one. Oh, I don't know, putting all those maps, all those maps on the, on the website, so probably will. Yeah, we should have complan session there with complan maps, you can start looking at some of the data.
Probably, you should put a little disclaimer that we can't be sued for inaccuracies.
Yeah. First of all, the assessors' maps, so there's a caveat right there.
That was what I was going to say, because when I went through the map the first time around, I, I basically did the, you know, cray on the pencil and paper approach, and John did this. Um, there, there are discrepancies, and I know John Brandon did the same thing in terms of the assessors' maps, there were some places that were.
Okay.
Yeah, but they, they, this, if they combine smaller ones, those just have one effect, right? The assessors' map?
Yeah.
No, but I mean, that, that, you can get a discrepancy in the assessors' map versus the complan, because it may be all under one hole, and you search for 50 acres and five different things.
Plus, it also changes all the time, this is, land changes and stuff, there's gonna be something that I don't, 100%.
Plus, attorneys write the deeds.
Right.
Okay, very helpful.
You got a question?
Well, I'm wondering about the, the R4, did the R2 combine? Is there any changes to the R4 outside of the-
We haven't done R4 yet.
Okay.
But that, we, we started our discussion last meeting, looking at the, you know, language for those two segments, and basically said, we need to work on this, and that's where we are.
Okay, that, that, another, another question.
We'll be back when we have a proposal.
Okay, we'll be waiting for you. So, um, if we were to combine the R2 and the R3, will we have just a 1, 2, and 4?
No, you have a 1, 2, and a, see, the R4 is not a residential district, and it never has been. It's called rural conservation. So it'll be residential 1, residential 2, and rural conservation.
So that makes it R4.
If that's, yeah, how we're gonna end up.
This is the proposed, and people would be confused if R4 were done.
That's how it always is.
Yeah, they're, yeah, it's, it's for, yeah. It's the complan.
So, so, I've read, uh, very few she-
There's things that you think need to be addressed in the complan as well. You know, whether you'd send something along as far as any impressions that you might have, that you think are compatible with the way, the way you're seeing the land use going, you know? Because I, I think one of the things that it's, it's a good opportunity right now to sit down and say, okay, where, where have we been? Is it working, and where do we want to go? Do we need to make some changes to tweak things to make things work better?
Yeah. One, one of the things that I'm big upon of, and I hope we don't let it go, is, is the cluster development, because it does allow the, that open space to be, so it does allow turf habitat and, and everything else there. And I'm hoping that's still gonna be part of the comp plan.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things we've talked about on that, Tom, was the fact that most cluster developments, you know, if you've got a road coming in, it's what's the houses around it, and then instead of getting open space like it was designed to, you get a little dome up there and going around it. It's really nothing.
For habitats, yeah.
Habitat or rural look.
That, that, to a point, yeah, because we're, we, we, of course, that, that's easiest to do, so.
Yeah, exactly.
But, um, we don't have anything that requires.
Well, by doing that, it gives them another site that they can put in. By not having it all here, if they put a little bit over here, it frees up a little bit for them. So word, no word saying that the, the, that set aside needs to be all together.
Yeah.
And then they're conducive to habitat or something like that.
Yeah.
We wrestled with the same thing, and you can't disapprove of it, because they're meeting the plan, but if there, there was something to say conducive to habitat, probably it should close in terms of.
I, I don't think we're likely to recommend a dense cluster, but we'd like to see other options. You know, like what we were talking about before, something other than acres. 10, 10 acre, small lots.
We're talking about how like bittersweet lane, you know, that's what, at least 10 acres.
Yeah, 10 acres.
And, and that looks nice, and it's very rural, and it's, people all, on that road, just about all have the elements, horses or whatever, and stuff there. Bittersweet, you know, it's 10 acre lots, and where's the best way down the other end of rental, just to drive?
I won't speak for, yeah, I won't speak for rest, but I was on.
It's, it's at the tip of a rental way at the other end that you've ever taken and dragged down. It's very rural, it's very nice, it's all, it's a dirt road, but it's not clustered.
You have to come in front.
From 35, 55, you know, and, and again, you take somebody like, um, when Evan Jones split up his, you know, his 48th farm of lots, you know, that, that doesn't ruin, ruin your rural character, you know.
And the only, the only danger is, is that they can, if the developer might like that, but then we have to ensure that each separate owner, owners that, so they're not gonna just.
To break that, yeah, for a deed restriction.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because the, the minimum acreage for R4 has been argued forever. You know, we, um, once upon a time, when we were much younger, we tried to get five acre minimum for R4, and that didn't fly at all, so that was why we settled on three. But, you know, three, even five acres does not preserve rural, you know, it's, that's still crowded. And you're really talking about a wide open space and good habitat preservation and variety of habitats. Five acres is still nothing, so, um, the, the, a 10 acre subdivision is a nicer, accomplishes the task better than.
Deed restrictions, so you couldn't bring that 10 acres out and treat it on some.
Good deal, we have to have some. Anything else for the board members or what, to discuss this? Thank you, guys.
And again, I, I would encourage you, we think that, that makes you come to the meeting in January 6th, which is Tuesday. Um, so when we meet with the landowners, for that little section on Lumbergh Road, you can hear what they have to say, because that, that might give you some insight in terms of what, you know, some of the things that you might want to consider as you get into the meeting.
January 6th, here?
Yep.
At Lumbergh?
Yes.
At what time?
Saturday 5.
It's where you meet, right? That's our meeting, right?
With the landowners, yeah.
It's where you're gonna discuss, so. Wait a minute, you got something going on?
Get a, put the area down, Lumbergh Road, I would have some time or two. What area of the, Lumbergh?
Still be recovered?
From the Easter Trail South. There, because that, well, that's where we have quite a few split lots, right, we're looking right at it right there. Quite a few split lots between R1 and R4.
Right. I'll blow it up. I'll enlarge. See, this is the line right here. This is Lumbergh Road, this is Lumbergh Road right through here. And then here's the existing property, the existing zone line, which is for R1, and then on this side, it's R4.
That's a cheap one.
And the reason for that, quite frankly, is, I don't, you know, Tom could tell me, you know, it was just we wanted to have a certain distance from the road, but oddly enough, the soil's line isn't much different from that. I can pull up the soils and it's pretty terrifying to see, but it's all floodplain soils.
Okay, all along that lines, how much do we have, how much do we have of that entry growth?
I don't know.
Does this?
I don't know.
I'm just saying there's.
Which is, which is why they probably want to keep it in R4 instead of bringing it in R1.
I'm just.
If they're in our entry growth, yeah.
I mean, that's just an overall question, the, the, that's.
It's one, one of the things with, uh, the, the lines are already there, so if you've been, been, given, adapting. So what if someone wants it to be in R1, and it brings them all the way down to the, to the river? And they, they could put in, uh.
Well, no, they can't, because they're gonna be limited by shoreline zoning and what the soils are like. So they can say they want to be in R1, and it can be in R1, but they're still facing all sorts of limitations.
Which would be the case for, for most, most properties to have something like that built, but, but where, where, um, let's say someone did have a tree farm, they, they, because there's not much else they can do with it, you know, in, in that area. But then on either side of them, the properties might choose to go to R1, which means one acre lots. So they could be, have big subdivisions on either side of them.
Well, technically, that could happen now on the road edge.
On the road edge? Hmm, well.
Because that's in R1 now, all along that distance.
Only in the R1 portion, other portion.
Right, but that, once you get closer to the river, you have more environmental restrictions. You know, ultimately, you're at the mercy of your neighbors anyway, no matter who they are or where they live.
And that, and that's why we, we have zoning at all, just to have some kind of standards.
But you're right, that, that zone was just kind of arbitrary, took there because, because we wanted, you know, we need to put both areas.
The state forced us to have some growth areas, so.
Well, see, that was a major road. We didn't force us.
Oh, yeah, no choice, because you had, you had no choice.
What can we do, Adam?
Oh, yeah, you could've said no, and they would've, they would've, zoning ordinance, because that was the, that was the, that was the stick.
Well, let's not have that discussion again.
Right here, just, just, just to show a little bit, you know, what I was, I was talking about. This is Campground Road right here, this is Lumbergh Road right here. Everything in red is a hydro soil, according to medium intensity SCS soil map. You see huge scantic, you see huge amounts of dog birds.
What does that mean?
That should be dog bird, too. Up there, it's, it's wet, this, everything red is wet, soaking wet soil, actually under Army Corps of Engineer review.
And white is, is ledge.
Uh, no, actually, but, yeah. So, no, this is great, look, atom soil, there's a nice chunk of atom soil right there. That's the farm, you nice chunk of atoms here. Oh, look, that's a, a, a mine, I mean, a sand, a gravel pit. This is all nice soil in through here.
What's the bubba soil over there?
This, the bubba soil, yeah, not great soil, but it's not hydro.
So potentially buildable except for sure that it's, uh.
Right.
I'll.
And you get floodplain areas.
Yeah, it's all top. It's actually.
Yeah, I'd say I would say where that is.
That's, that's.
It's all buildable.
On stilts.
And soaking like a.
I was, I was sore, this is all buildable, you're right. The zoning would change and should change if we get sore, because these constraints aren't going to be the same.
Well, what's your crystal ball say?
We'll have sore someday.
Oh, so, and how, what, what day?
Well, you said it's a crystal ball.
Somebody on the, somebody on the.
We won't be lying.
That happens.
It might be, it might happen, frankly speaking, if you could get, if we get sore, the dust will off here in the next seven years or so, as the current, current plan might be.
Might be.
Um, you know, extending it up to 1, or excuse, excuse me, extending it up to Lumbergh Road into the R1 district would make sense.
Now, what's that darker soil, like off Campground though, that darker red, is that the same?
It's just, I was, I'm like, my, my, my red pencil.
It's the same color.
It's either white or it's dark. Might be level of dark, but it's lighter and scarier. It was quickly done. Limin', eight to, eight to fifteen percent ledge. But remember, this is medium intensity soil, which means the SCS did some flights, did some interpretations of vegetation, did some ground truthing, and based on some soil penons, they'd stuck in various places, they made some very gross, uh, perceptions, and also looking at topo maps, they made some very, very, um, gemmified impressions of where the soils were in town. It could be much better than this, it could be much worse than this, usually it's a little better. So it, you might find more, you'll find more pockets up, up, in there. But, but it does give you an idea of the kind of constraints we're dealing with here, and why maybe, you know, why something, along some of these roads, you know, it's, it's, it's good, good development. Maybe we should extend, you know, think about pushing it back for the, if the soil's gonna, gonna support. Presumably, it could be much bigger in here.
Most of the development is going, you could have four in any one.
And that's because they want larger lots. They don't want.
But subdivisions, with the cluster subdivisions.
Yeah.
They're going to, to, they're not necessarily doing larger lots, they're just, they're in that lower.
Right, I will tell you that the lot splits, a lot of the lot splits are in the R4 district.
Yeah.
A lot of res, a lot of family did splits where the R4s, because they want larger lots.
There's been as much development in, in that, uh, the R4 as there has been in, in the other districts. You know, that's a low growth.
Yeah, that, that's the irony that the board is facing, is that the actual pressure has been more in the R4 than it has been in other districts.
Yeah, because the lot's all planned and didn't work.
Yeah, failed, miserable failure. I mean, i- if the intent was to prevent development, it did everything but, so. And the board's aware of it, the plan was talked about.
Well, you have the two opposing, the two opposing legitimate discussions, and one is along the corridor. That's the second largest main artery that we have, that's the D I W, you know? So there is that, and I think that's why it got voted out, actually. Um, along that protective 111, you know, we're better for business, actually.
Yeah, but you still can't see it.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking big business, I'm talking little business.
Well, thank you for, for doing that, presenting that, so.
Thank you, thank you.
So I, I shall.
I, I, I do have one little thing I want to throw in, and this is not a, a committee discussion, it's just something from me as a result of having been to some of your meetings and listened to your discussion about the mixed use districts. When, when we put the comp plan suggestions together, and we said small retail or small whatever, and we attached a number, and then as, as, I listened to your discussion, particularly Townhouse Corner and Gateway District. And I'll focus on Gateway District, because it's the smallest. Maybe as you consider small, medium, and large, instead of locking it into like 5,000 square feet as the maximum for small, perhaps in some places like Gateway District, you might want to look at something like 2,000 square feet. So that small is a range, it's not a number. And if the district is smaller, or the conditions would lead you in that direction, maybe make small retail something smaller than 5,000 square feet. Um, the same thing might be true in Townhouse Corner, for some of those things that you were talking about. But Gateway, it kind of jumped up at me, and I said, gee, we defined in one place small as 5,000 square feet, and that's way too big for Gateway. Um, it might also end up being too big for the, um.
Uh, we looked at that group, how big is CMP now?
PNC now.
Not CMP, the guest.
Chemping.
Chemping.
Uh, that was a, a little under 2,000.
Yeah, ain't that where we ended up for that area?
No, we went up to 10.
We went up to 10?
Wow.
But it's.
I think a lot size.
Really out of proportion of what it is.
Well, I guess my, my suggestion is just, you know, maybe take a look at that again.
But that was based on lot size too, because there were some larger ones under that. And that smaller one in the front, when it's just staying, that, that's like the. But we can go over there again, but I think that's how, I think that's where that split was. The, the, the big ones in the back, and the, I don't think there was any up front, but we'll look at it. I mean, if there was any up front, we would pick it. The, the difficulty is, you know, you build on top of it. The million dollars. Well, there is.
You can't stay sane.
Every time we hear the workforce, it sounds like a good idea. It gets us in trouble.
Maybe change is 15 other things, you know, you think, oh, wait a minute, you know, we didn't name that down. Makes like that whole. Cluster subdivision. When we were writing that, I thought that was gonna be an alternative, that we, that we're going to be a benefit to the contractors, should they so decide, and it came out that, you have to cluster, that, um. All right, let's do that, okay, make that a name, and you're all done.
All right, so, thank you, we're just, I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda today. Um, I'll just report, I'll make it real quick. See, Marty, before you ask me, they've been out clearing at, um, at the, um.
Jason, lots of clearing.
Got lots of clearing, they haven't done any blasting yet, I don't have my, my shirty, yeah, they can't blast them, but they, the shirty is, asked me to get.
And how many weeks?
Uh, they still don't have it.
Then I stopped.
And they have.
Month?
It's 30 days. It's 30 days.
That's why I said three weeks, yeah.
I will give them a reminder. Uh, we have some applications coming in, I, we have a, uh, application coming in for, uh, new business on Enterprise Drive. We have a potential, um, couple of other ones sort of coming in. It'll be interesting, I can't talk about what might happen, we haven't gone very far yet, but, uh, we'll have several, no residential, just all commercial stuff. Let's get, we got going right now. Yep. What about the special, uh, meeting, the town meeting for the, uh, the change in seasonal quality?
Yes, that's.
John, John, you mentioned.
I mean, to, to go to, uh.
December 31st.
December 31st, I had.
No, it already happened.
December 31st?
It already, no, it's been voted.
That was a town meeting?
November 24th.
What's that town meeting, huh?
November 24th was a special town meeting, and then we just changed.
I took that with a public hearing.
Was it a public hearing?
All in one?
So are, yeah, most, you know, we didn't have to have a public hearing, you did, but we didn't because it was at an open town meeting where discussions about.
And we had a public hearing on the.
So we only have.
Public hearing.
Yeah, so I didn't have to hold this as a referendum vote.
There was a speech, right?
I don't know.
We had 25.
Yeah.
It's 25, so it's, so it's, so it's an eight month thing now from, was April to December 31st.
By the way, also. I should report to you also, those, those that would be interested, on January 7th, there'll be a webinar with, um, with FEMA that will be discussing the new floodplain maps. Uh, they just have it on Wednesday, during the day, this one will be, I think, a night one. Which they will have, I will send you all information on it, those who would like to see, uh, what the new changes are and FEMA's rationalization of the changes to the floodplain maps will be discussed.
Are they doing anything by contour?
Don't know, you had to change precision.
Don't know, Marty, it's just, it's very, very, very specific along the shoreline. Along the coastline, especially in the velocity zones, the velocity zones along the, uh, the coastline where we have surf essentially, um, they are very, very specific, they're very intense. So inland, not so much.
Is this an update to their last decision?
This is an update to the update to the update. Yeah, this is, this is reaction to the pushback.
Public outcry?
Yeah, the revolution essentially.
Yeah, okay. That's why I asked.
It still has impacts. Are we hit that hard by it? No, it's, I mean, it's. No, it's, it deals more with coastal properties, if anything else, because of the three foot sea level, I suppose, when it comes to...
Is that your crystal ball too?
It's not mine.
No. It's out of doors.
It's not mine. We are experiencing rebounding by twenty two millimeters a year.
We're now waiting for the iceberg to build up on the road.
That's the point. At what point does that... The tendency of uniformity or geology data, it really doesn't work out that well. So right now, that's our rate, and it has been consistent for the last several, last hundred years, but will it continue to be consistent? But they're making their assumptions in the next hundred years, plus sea level, so that's why we had the floodplain one this week. So that's about all we have, but I will send you out that, if anybody wants to enjoy that, you can feel like, thank you, make comments, Johnny, make me enjoy it. I think you'd do input during it, so.
None of them have even lived on the water.
Well, I can't speak to that, but according to them, they will.
No. I'm talking, they may live on the water floating, but none of them have actually have lived on the water physically year round.
Certainly not to the extent you have, Marty, to teach them a lot, I'm quite sure.
Okay, so, teach them how to live less. All favor, jury?
Your report is your concern, has Captain Peter Rappel tickets, if anyone has, two hundred tickets maximum, sold twenty dollars a ticket, and fries and grain in the corner of wood on down. You want to take a look at it? Does anybody have money and interest? Well, you know where to find the office.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But take a look at it so that you know where to get your, maybe why.
Those guys, those engineers are all not funny.